City of Stevens Point Common Council Meeting, recorded April 17, 2023.
At seven o'clock, we will call the regular Common Council Meeting of the City of Stevens Point to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Christiansen?
Here.
Shore.
Almost here.
Keemer?
Keemer is online, so she is here.
Sarah Zua?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Plissans?
Here.
Niebon?
Here.
Shuda?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Fishler?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
And everyone is present. I do want to point out that we are not live streaming off of our website tonight. There was an issue last week. We had to turn it off. We haven't turned it on back on yet, but we do meet the legal requirements in person and via Zoom. Joel, if you want to show them which button you switched last time. But we do meet all those legal requirements, so we are good to go. We just will record it. It will still be available on the website. It's just the live streaming on the website is not available. You can still join as others are through Zoom. And now if you would join me, far salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for joining us tonight. Cory and Ginger can't hear. Love technology, just love it. Cory or Ginger, can you hear me now? Nod? That's because of the stream. How about now? Can you hear me now? All right, I got a thumbs up. We are good to go.
Ginger looks like she's in the witness protection.
If we had a backlight where she could get a shadow or something, that would be kind of cool. Alrighty, I am going to keep the remarks brief. We've got a pretty lengthy agenda, and I know that there are several people that want to speak, but I did want to take a moment to acknowledge the passing of Albert Rackow. For those of us that have been around a while, there are a few names of alderpersons that come to mind that did extraordinary jobs. Bernice Sovenik, Jack Barr, Roger Trebatuski, and Albert Rackow is right up there. He served on the city council for over 14 years and was all over the community when he was when he was able to, including being heavily involved in the Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association and their book sales every year. Albert passed away on March 21 of this year, and he will be missed. Moving along, item number three is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing must register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council on a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until the public hearing is declared open. We have no public hearings on the agenda tonight, so if anybody wishes to speak on any agenda, including the non-agenda agenda item, we can have you register with McKenna at the door. Okay? Anyone online wishing to speak on any agenda item? Okay, I see nothing there. So then we will move on to item number four. McKenna, you want to bring those up, please? Thank you. First one up on item number four, the non-agenda item, persons who wish to address the mayor on a non-agenda item and city council for up to three minutes regarding any non-agenda item. First up is Bob Larson.
Bob Larson, 3283 Lindbergh Avenue, Stevens Point. First, I want to thank the city council and the mayor for allowing citizens to speak on non-agenda items. Thank you. I asked my 10th district alderperson to try to put this item on the agenda for this week, but we were not successful, but thank you anyway. I was told, I'm talking about swales, I apologize. I was told all new road projects that have no curb and gutter will get swales. So we're looking like Niebel Street, Clifford Street, Martha's Lane, Minnesota, Dan's Drive. In the future, when their roads are need construction, they're going to get swales. Some of the limitations of swales, they have limited removal of fine sediment and dissolved pollutions. When the snowplows come through every winter dumping sand, that sand will end up in the swale, and eventually it's going to fill it, and we're back to digging again. It uses more land than curb and gutter. Swales will eliminate parking on our streets. It's a breeding ground for mosquitoes. We'll be exposed more to West Nile virus. And where I live, it's all sand, so if you grade the roads properly, we get a lot of rain, it's in the ground in a few, within 10 minutes, it's gone. So my question is why do we need swales in sandy areas? North side that's in clay, different story. What's the impact on my underground sprinklers? Is the city going to pay to have them changed? Because right now I'm watering the city's grass, and when the swales come in, I'm going to lose some of my heads. Is the city going to fix it for me? What about the impact of tedious fiber optics and spectrum that are in the front of some of the homeowners? That all has to be moved also. Who's going to be watering the swales and cutting the grass? So I would just, and the road edges, possibly the edges of the roads are breaking up a little bit. You have garbage trucks, recycle trucks coming down the streets every week, and they're close to the edges of the road. That could be showing some impact on the roads also. I just, and then the cutting down trees, the city plants trees, now they're cutting trees because they're in that swale area. So I would like this to come back to the city as an agenda item because it affects so many homeowners, not just the people on Lindbergh Avenue. You're talking Minnesota, Niebel, Dan's Drive. A lot of people are affected by the swales. And in my own personal opinion, I don't think they work. I look at Indiana, and that's nothing but an eyesore. It's weeds. And like I said, it's a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
By the way, here's some signatures from people that I worked with last week on petition.
You can submit those signatures to the clerk.
Bottom line is everybody that was home who said no.
So Bob, we will get an explanation of the swales and have a discussion item on May's Public Works Meeting. I'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Brock Maddox. Brock, anything you hand out, you got to go through the clerk.
Sorry.
Anybody can get a copy of that. They'll be available at the clerk's office tomorrow.
My name is Brock Maddox, 5421 Monroe Avenue, Plover, Wisconsin. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of the end, these ends, it's the right of the people to alter or abolish it. Operations and functions of the Dejure Grand Jury of the Sovereign People of Wisconsin, a free and independent nation-state. The Grand Jury is the oldest, most respected, powerful civil institutions of the United States of America, and whereas the concept of the Grand Jury dates all the way back to the Magna Carta in 1215, and was included in the constitutions of the Free Republics of Wisconsin and the United States of America, Republic 1787, as a means for the people to rein in elected government acting outside the limits of the delegated power. And when a government appears to be committing criminal and constitutional acts, it can hardly be relied upon to bring charges and indictments against itself. It is therefore the duty and obligation of we the people to utilize this first form of correcting the abuse and oppression of government that has turned corrupt and greedy, to correct in conflict interest of lawyers being in the majority seated in all branches of government and thereby writing immunities for their criminal acts. Therefore, we the people inhabiting the land of Wisconsin, a free, independent nation-state, free men and women convened under God, having been granted by the Creator dominion over all earth, to protect and restore the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to all prosperity, do hereby invoke our sacred right to peacefully assemble as memorialized by in the unanimous Declaration of the Thirteen States of America, 1776, Articles of Confederation in 1781, the Covenant of Michigan, 2010, do hereby establish the Dejure Grand Jury of the Sovereign People of Wisconsin, a free and independent state-nation. The Dejure Grand Jury existing by the right according to common law and law has lawfully assembled on the free dry land of Wisconsin, a free, independent nation-state, is not a part of the de facto incorporated judicial system. It functions as an entirely separate and independent body according to the rights, powers granted by the Creator invested in we the people by the Constitution of the United States of America, 1787, amended in 1791. Whereas the Assembly of we the people being one of the principles most respected, powerful civil rights of the American people, and whereas the concept of the Assembly dated back to the early colonies, which included in the Constitution of the Free Republics in the United States of America, 1787, as means for the people to rein in elected government acting outside the limits of delegated power, and whereas when a government appears to be committing criminal and unconstitutional acts, it can hardly be relied upon to bring charges and indictments against itself. Therefore, we the people inhabiting the land of Wisconsin, free, independent nation-state, free men, women convened under God, having been granted the Creator dominion over all the earth, to protect, restore the blessings of liberty for ourselves, for our prosperity, do hereby invoke our sacred right to peacefully assemble as memorialized in the unanimous Declaration of Independence of the Thirteen United States of America, 1776, Articles of Confederation, 1781, and the Constitution of Wisconsin, 1848, and do hereby establish this Wisconsin General Journal Assembly of the Sovereign People of Wisconsin, a free and independent nation-state. This Wisconsin General Journal Assembly being formed and is existing by the right according to common law and law has lawfully assembled on the free dry land of Wisconsin, a free, independent nation-state, is not part of the de facto incorporated bodies such as political action committees, PACs, and any all political parties. It functions as entirely separate and independent body, void of affiliation with any and all partisan connections according to the rights and powers granted by our Creator, invested in the people by the Bill of Rights to secure these rights, to address constitutional usurpations for the United States of America, 1787, and amended in 1791.
Thank you, Brock.
We fully expect your full cooperation during this moment in transitional period. We are working with 39 other states, so.
Thank you, Brock.
Yep, thank you.
Next up, Fran Makarov.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I was just trying to make a point here about the parking lots in at Save-A-Lot and Quick Trip, and you also have the espresso. The parking lots have deep pocket holes to where people are trying to not hit the holes, but it's really, really bad. And I had seen where the city had came out and on Church Street had filled in some of the holes with the tar, but they also left chunks of the road. So I'm just trying to not sound like a broken record here, but I just really want to see, you know, more to be enhanced with South Side. I know that you and I have talked on topics, and I also know that there is a stigma, like we have talked, and when it comes to the South Side and low, low income and everything else, and I hate to be labeled. I hate that because I have worked so many years with the county, and I just feel like, you know, that label for South, for the South End, which is also part of Stevens Point, but I think Council and you, Mayor, knowing that you have got the executive order to go ahead and sign off and make things work for the South End, you know, there's other areas of Stevens Point where the roads are just really, really nice, and that it's been approved to have it reconstructed and so on, but the resurface is only for the South Side, which I just can't seem to fathom. So yeah, I just wanted to bring up these points because we, on the South End, have to be acknowledged within Stevens Point, you know? I mean, the South End is all part of Stevens Point, and there's a lot of people on Council that just want to brush the South End and just brush it down the water or drain. And, you know, so I just wanted to make a few points, and I thank you, but excuse my speech impediment.
Thank you very much, Fran. No, and rest assured that we evaluate the entire city. There were several roads that were redone last year on the South Side. Mr. Larson was talking about some roads on the South Side that were going to have swales installed, trying to take better care of those. The Parks Department, I know, is working on some improvements. Kusakuski, the Church Street, what happens is the crews go out and blow out the holes, fill them, and then the street sweepers come in later. So that should have been gone this weekend. I know the street sweepers were out Friday night. We ask them to, when they do that, to try and at least blow it off to the curb so it's not in the middle of the road. Private parking lots, however, are the responsibility of the property owners, and that's everywhere throughout the city. We are looking into ways that we might be able to amend our property maintenance ordinance to have some enforcement capability because there's a few spots where the property owners need some serious repair on their parking lots. So we'll keep you posted on that, Fran.
Well, thank you.
All right. And lastly, we have Alder Person Mary Niebon.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. While I was canvassing for the prior election here, one of my constituents said they thought maybe the city should do a newsletter because they were finding it hard to find out what's going on. So I got thinking about all the ways you really can find out about anything going on in the city. There's a website, a Facebook page, a YouTube channel. The city's got an app that's fantastic. Go in there and hit notify me, and you can get notified on 15 different items when they come up. You can notify the clerk to have agendas emailed or mailed to you. There's just all kinds of ways. You can call your alder, you can call the mayor, you can call Alder Shuda if you have any questions.
Your cell phone number is 715.
About anything, about the rich road swales. I got an earful about that, and that's not in my district, so. I want to let people know who the proper people are to connect.
Appreciate that, Mary. Thank you.
The city app really is a fantastic source of information. There's a quick links for Business 51, road construction projects, all sorts of stuff. So if you have any questions about anything, truly call your alder. And if we don't have an answer, we can find out, and we can certainly let you know about what's going on if we have that information. So let us know and get connected.
Wonderful. Thank you. Yeah, we've been trying real hard to try and make sure we try and hit every avenue where people get their information from, but we're not perfect. So if there are suggestions outside the website and the app and the push notifications, if it's really important, we actually started sending text messages now, pushing those out to the phones in case of a snow emergency or that sort of thing, the TV station, the radio station, our social media. If there's another way that you think we would benefit the community from getting the word out, please, by all means, let us know. And that exhausts our non-agenda item speakers. We will move on now. We have a presentation from our District Attorney, Cass Cousins, and DA perspective on the County Justice Center. And there is a presentation that I am going to share online. Stand by.
Well, that's coming up. Thank you, Mayor Wiesa, and thank you, Council, and thanks to everyone. So I was invited here by the mayor to, I guess, give a similar presentation to one I gave to the county board recently with respect to some questions that I saw that were raised at county board meetings on some issues that were deemed pertinent to the construction of a new justice center in Portage County. Specifically, those were questions relating to essentially where do offenders or where do groups of people who are really the primary or most significant users of the courthouse, where do they actually live with respect to the county? And so that was data that was just not available to the county board members, and so I put that together. Just, I guess, at the outset, to introduce myself, like I said, I'm Cass Cousins. I've been DA now since August, but 2022, but previously I was initially an assistant DA here in Portage County since 2011. And, you know, with respect to this project for constructing a new courthouse, I remember actually very well, I had just started, I think it was September or October in 2011, Judge Finn, late Judge Finn, was still on the bench in Branch Two, and he invited me into his chambers, and he basically showed me this map of this is how it's going to be. And it was a downtown map showing the courthouse next to the annex with the bridge, and obviously that was several different plans ago. You know, most recently with the land swap that didn't work out in 2019. And, you know, from my perspective as DA and as someone who's used the courthouse for many, many years and worked there for many, many years, I think it's a very important project, and everyone who works there and law enforcement really is frankly at risk. It's not a safe situation for the employees of the county, employees of the city, frankly. I saw the city attorney, his office is extremely insecure, the mayor's office. It's really not a good environment with respect to the possible risks that people can face, and also not for the inmates as well because they have to basically be walked across the street to get to court. And then also, there's a large proportion of inmates who have to actually reside out of county, in Wapaka County, and when they're there, they're not able to access services that are available in our county jail, and even just, you know, be seen by family and friends, like that kind of contact is really lost. So it's a very important project, and I have opinions on it. My preference is that it be built downtown. I live downtown. It's a three-minute walk for me, so that's very convenient. I think there's a lot of other reasons which have been raised and discussed at great length, but ultimately, downtown or green site, my strong feeling is it needs to be done one way or the other. And I guess that's all I want to say on that, other than to kind of provide some of this data. And like I said, I presented this to the county board just to address what I perceive to be really a lack of actual hard information as to where offenders generally reside. I looked back five years. Our DA's office uses a statewide system that all DA's offices throughout the state utilize, called Protect. Very easy for us to pull this data and then plug it into a map. And, you know, I look back five years, but it's essentially the same map five times over and over again, and it shows, you know, some, you know, spread throughout Stevens Point, going down into Plover and then the county. And obviously, there's certainly a concentration within the metro area with the towns also with some groupings. And then, you know, here and there, out in the, in the county, you see various, various spots. So, you know, I presented this to the county board. You know, this is a consideration that I think is relevant. I think it's good to have convenience for offenders, and I think that people who are near to the courthouse certainly would benefit from having it in close proximity. There are some caveats. Obviously, there's other people who do use the courthouse, much, you know, beyond criminal defendants, and, you know, I think their considerations are valid as well. And, you know, whatever the relevance of that data is, I put it out to the county board and allowed them to make of it what they will. So beyond that, one of the questions I also fielded was just about some other courthouses, and I sort of started talking without really being prepared, and I wanted to supplement what I had spoken about at the county board meeting with some other examples of courthouses around the state. And I, like I said, I wanted to present something that I thought was useful, not the same information over and over again, and also was relevant to my experience. I, before coming back to the DA's office here as DA and getting that appointment to complete Judge Milewski's term, I worked for the Wisconsin Department of Justice for four years, basically traveling all around the state prosecuting homicides and drug cases. And I saw a bunch of courthouses, and so I put a couple of examples out there because I know there's been a lot of conversation about is the site big enough, you know, what's available in terms of land. And so the top one, Mayor, if you go to the very top first one, that's the St. Croix County Courthouse. I actually worked there for a year right after I graduated from law school in 2010. It's 12 acres. It's a giant site, tons of parking. They're actually, they have outgrown it, but they still have enough room to basically keep to that footprint with a little bit of expansion and basically double, double the size of the courthouse. I think they have four branches, and they're looking at adding four more. It's a very rapidly growing county. Below that, I believe I put, is that Wood County? That's the Wood County Courthouse. That's recently expanded as well with a new jail being constructed. It's about five acres. Practiced a lot there. Next one is Marathon County Courthouse. I don't think that's really an example to emulate. It's, the parking there is terrible with that garage, but just an example of the footprint of that courthouse, just shy of eight acres. And then Wapaka County, our neighbor to the east, similar, about nine acres. And then this was the best example that I could find. I think it's really the only analogous example in the state of Wisconsin to a greenfield site. It's the Door County Courthouse, built maybe about a mile or two from downtown, but in a fairly undeveloped area, and it's a 30-acre site, pretty spread out. I think it's one or two stories throughout, but I think it's a pretty good example of kind of the, you know, alternative to a downtown site that I think is in discussion. And then the last two I created were just kind of visuals of that site, which is about five and a half acres, and then I think the city and the mayor's offer of kind of expanding it further, which is about a total of 10 and a half acres. So that was something that I had sort of talked about a little bit at the county board meeting, but didn't have visuals to back up. But in any event, you know, I'm hopeful that it's something that's of assistance to the city when, I guess, your part comes into this because it is a county project, and I think that's obvious, but I do think the city does certainly play a role and that there's going to be a need for collaboration and cooperation in that. And I'm very hopeful that that happens because, like I said, it's approaching a crisis point. So I'm very hopeful that perhaps this is the time where it will get done, and something will be, will be done to address the unsafe situation. And like I said, I'm very hopeful that that happens. And if anyone has any questions, I'm easy to reach. I work at the courthouse. Happy to answer any questions right now, you know, time permitting. I know it was a long agenda. Also, if anyone wants any of the data that I used to create those, happy to share that as well.
Thank you, District Attorney Cousins. We appreciate it. This is going to be one of the biggest decisions the county makes. I was just noticing this one. You said this was Green Bay?
This is the Door County.
Door County.
Door County. Yep.
So yeah, I wonder how far of a walk it is from where they park these cars up to the door. It seems like, boy, a city block or two.
Long, it is, yes.
So yes, thank you very much for the presentation. The presentation and data can be available through the District Attorney's Office. We'll also have this PowerPoint available for our city clerk to distribute should anyone want this information. This is an important decision that the county board is making. They're voting on a site tomorrow, and they're voting on the funding for that site on May 2. So I would encourage anyone who has an opinion one way or the other to contact your county board supervisor, contact John Pavelski, the county executive, Al Haga, the county board chairman. And if you need any of those numbers, they're available online, or you can contact my office or any of the other city offices. We'll be happy to give you those phone numbers and contact information. We'll be happy to give you those phone numbers and contact information. Thank you, District Attorney.
Yep, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And that moves us into our consent agenda. Because we have many people here wishing to speak on item number 17, after the consent agenda, without objection from the body, I would move item number 17 up to right after the consent agenda. Is there any objection to that?
That's a great idea.
Thank you. Then we'll start with the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, seconded by President Johnson. Discussion there. Comments from the audience? Hearing and seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keimer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Posans?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Shuda?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Bischler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number now 17 is the approval of the lease with the Boys and Girls Club of Portage County for space at 933 Michigan Avenue. We have, it was approved in, is it February? I believe it was approved in February at the Finance Committee. It is a lease for some space that we have available at 933 Michigan Avenue. And we are here to consider that tonight. We do have an extensive speaker list. So we'll start with that one, and we'll start out with Timmy Cooper.
I think, can we go in order? Do you mind?
I tell you what, if you know who's speaking, go in whatever order you want. These were just the way these were handed to me.
Let Kevin lead on.
Alrighty.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you for allowing us to speak here tonight. And we appreciate your consideration with, you know, our ask. And our ask is, you know, for us to occupy a portion of this building, you know, for a dollar-a-year type lease arrangement. And, you know, our organization would be happy to pay our fair share of utility expenses. We understand, you know, that, you know, we could potentially add to the utility costs a bit by being in there, so we'd be happy to pay our fair share. You know, I know the last meeting, we presented the programs, and, you know, we have five programs that we want to move into this space. One is the Gateway Report Center, which JR runs and has run for over 17 years. This program is for some of the highest-risk kids in our area. You know, we're really trying to prevent them from getting into an out-of-home placement. We're trying to stop the expansion of justice centers, you know, with that program. The next one is the Yes Center, which operates during the day, you know, working with kids who are, you know, having a hard time in school. So we work with the school district, the county. I know the police is involved at times. Our truancy program, you know, currently operates at the Charles Fernandez Alternative School. The school district is making plans to vacate that building, so we need to get out, which is part of the impetus of this. We have a new homelessness youth navigator program that is just beginning, but we're trying to, you know, help kids and families that are experiencing homelessness. And let's see, the last program is called the Youth Force, Workforce Development Programming, and a very specialized program, you know, trying to, you know, do what our employers want us to do, and that's preparing kids for the workforce. So all of these programs, you know, one thing I think we didn't stress during our presentation is that, you know, all of these programs are kind of like outside of a normal Boys and Girls Club. You know, and what we're trying to move in are really services that groups have asked us to do. So Gateway, the county asked us to do it. Truancy, the school district asked us to do it along with the county. The Yes Program, the school and the county asked us to do it. The Yes Center, oh, I already said that. The homeless navigator program, you know, the state and CAP Services asked Boys and Girls Club, would you do this? Here's funding for it. And Workforce Development, the Youth Force Program, you know, mid-state called us and said, we want you to be a partner. We'll write a grant. You can get some of the funding. Can you do this? So, you know, what's different is that, you know, these are programs that are outside of a normal Boys and Girls Club, but we're being asked to provide these services. And these are some of the most vulnerable kids in our community. So we're hopeful that, you know, the city of Stevens Point becomes one of these partners along with the county, the school district, the police department, the state, mid-state. You know, these are all tax-funded entities. Any funds that we would pay towards rent, I mean, it comes out of the operations. So I think you all know Boys and Girls Club, we don't charge kids. We don't charge families much at all. We're all about lifting up the kids who need it the most. So that is our ask, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Going to leave it up to you now, Timmy. All right, Tim Gotlieb.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Tim Gotlieb. I am the president of the board for the Boys and Girls Club. I've been doing that now for a little more than a year, been involved with the club for about six years. I'm also a local business owner here in town. Just wanted to start off by saying thank you for giving us the consideration for the use of the space. Over my tenure of working with the club, seeing how those programs impact the kids is huge. Being able to help these kids, as Kevin already mentioned and alluded to, these are the most at-risk kids in Portage County. So it's the location here, putting everything between the police station, the Boys and Girls Club right in the middle, it's just an ideal fit. It's a real good solution that we're hoping you guys will consider for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Richter. I am a club parent. I'm also a board member, and I'm a resident of Stevens Point. As many parents in the community know, finding quality care for children can be challenging, especially when both parents work full-time. That was our situation, and that ultimately led us to the Boys and Girls Club. Excuse me. What satisfied our needs exceeded our expectations. Our sons not only had a safe place to stay between the end of school and the end of work, but they found support for homework. They found healthy meals, exercise, opportunities to showcase their personalities and skills, and they grew through the programs they otherwise wouldn't have had exposure to. The club was intended initially as a placeholder for us, but we found it to be much more. Our needs aren't the same as everyone, but I can assure that the opportunities through the club will exceed expectations. Our oldest is currently a junior staff member. He is part of the Youth Force, Workforce Development that Kevin mentioned. He has found a role where he can continue to be groomed and where he can have an impact on others who need guidance, a safe place, structure, a healthy meal, someone to listen and understand them, or whatever their needs may be. In some cases, the club is the only place they can get such treatment. It's why our family and many others do our part to make it thrive. Thriving is definitely what the club is doing, and with that, the needs of the club are changing. We are growing in numbers, outgrowing spaces. Things are changing, as Kevin had mentioned. And this proposed space means more. Kids can be served, and that has ripples within our community. So I appreciate you giving me the time to share my personal experience, what the club means to my family, and I thank the club. I thank the council for the consideration. And I believe that the city of Stevens Point would not only be a great partner by allowing the club to utilize this space at a favorable yet fair cost, but the impact the club has in the community, we'll see that investment returned tenfold. So thank you.
Thank you. I can figure out the last one.
Timmy Cooper, lifelong Stevens Point resident, BGC board member, and I also own a business here in town. As Kevin was saying, the programs housed in this facility are ones that aren't like any other BGC programs. The services are, help provide services to and for the community, which Stevens Point's part of, school systems, court systems, and our social services systems. We don't receive donations for these. These programs are run as contracted by other tax-funded entities. These programs, as they said again, lift up the most vulnerable youth in our community. Stevens Point benefits directly from these programs. So we're trying to get these kids back into fully functioning, being able to just be kids again. And that's what these programs help them do. I mean, several of them have several strikes against them, and we're trying to get them back on level ground. As DA Cousins was pointing out, central location is really critical to some of these kids. They don't have, you know, transportation barriers are a big issue for a lot of these families. And last but not least, handicap accessibility. One of our buildings right now is completely inaccessible, and ironically, JR works there. So it's something really so we can serve kids and adults in a much safer fashion. So, and again, I can't stress enough that Stevens Point is a benefactor of these programs, so we're hoping you will partner with us on them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm finishing up. So I am here. I am not speaking on behalf of the school board. I am the current president of the school board. I am the vice president of the Boys and Girls Club. I am also a resident of Stevens Point. I believe it is essential for our communities to not only invest in infrastructure, but to invest in our kids. They are our future. We have had surveys within our district that tell us that 50% of our kids stay in our community right away. They go to UWSP, they work a job, they work a farm, they go into the military service, they go to MSTC, or they're not quite sure. Another 20% come back to us within the next 10 years. They've been out in the world, they're looking to raise a family, they're looking to enjoy why all of us are here. And so investing in that infrastructure and frankly recognizing that the kids who are the most vulnerable in our community are definitely the ones that are most likely to stay here is an investment that will return across the board. We, in some ways, our district is kind of prompting this change. We are making the change to move our Charles Fernandez Center out to Jackson School, to where Pods is currently located. We believe for those kids, it's important that they have FIED at that location without having to be transported to the Y and wasting, losing educational time. We want them to have a cafeteria. We want them to have green space. We want them to have more of a normal, natural experience. We have been housing these programs, several of these programs, for, you know, without rent, for a number of years for the Boys and Girls Club, because we believe that they're community programs and that it's important that we, as a school district, step up and partner to support these kids in a broad look. From the kids who are struggling, the kids who are struggling and involved with law enforcement, the kids who are in need of that just little bit of connection with a mentor that's going to help them get back on the right path, kids who are involved in workforce development. Because at the end of the day, that's what our employers want. That's what we as community members want. So we are going to be transitioning at the end of the school year. We will be putting that building on the market sometime this summer. Boys and Girls Club has been aware of it, and it's that transition of space for those kids. I'm going to just speak for just a couple more minutes, if you're willing to indulge that.
Finish your thoughts, Meg, please.
Okay, so. Let me take a pause. You know, it's essential. The county has provided funding. The county has provided personnel. The school district has provided, you know, in-kind support, and we've also provided personnel. MSTC has been there to support us. The university's been there to support us. The Stevens Point Police Department has been there. In terms of our presence in Plover, Plover from the opening of the doors of that, our regular programming down there has provided that space rent-free. That has just been a given. I think from the perspective that it truly is childcare for our community that just does not exist, especially for the most vulnerable and the people in our community that can't afford more than what the Boys and Girls Club is offering. We waive fees for people who are the most vulnerable, and our annual fee for all families is affordable for everybody else. So we are encouraging you to consider this partnership. The final thing, I understand that the city has some potential plans for that space. The understanding, you know, we understand that Parks Department may be moving in there. The city police department is thinking of, well, they need a garage facility. They are looking to create that. That's not going to happen overnight. What I want to tell you from a school district perspective is the one thing that we learned through COVID is Boys and Girls Club, the Y, our nonprofit community organizations were fundamentally flexible in supporting our organizations with what we need when we need it. What we need right now as a Boys and Girls Club is space now. What happens a year down the road or two years down the road as city plans become fleshed out is there will be the ability to be accommodating on the part of Boys and Girls Club and the ability to make things happen in the best interest of the city, of the police department, of the Parks Department, and of the Boys and Girls Club. So don't think about this decision tonight as like if you decide tonight, then you're stuck for three years. That may happen, but if the city moves forward more quickly over the next year or two or three, Boys and Girls Club is going to be amenable to sit down and help the city create what you want and what you need when you have the plans, the money, and the ability to make it happen. So we're encouraging you to vote in support of what Kevin presented, which is a dollar-a-year lease, payment of utilities as the city presents, and then that working together as partners as we move through this first, quote, "three years", that may be more, maybe less. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the registered speaker list is exhausted. Bringing it back to the body, first of all, I want to make sure that we don't give anyone the impression that we're not already partners with the Boys and Girls Club. The land in which the building is on now is a long-term lease. There are discounts applied for the municipal pool that's there, the use of the gym facility. And I don't think anyone in the Boys and Girls Club would want to misrepresent that. We are partners currently. The lease that's before you is the same price that was given to Northwest Journey, a favorable lease rate of about $6 a square foot. And that was intended to cover utilities and the cost of maintenance. As this body already knows, we just spent about, just under $40,000 on pieces of a roof over the life of the building. We had a water heater that was replaced, some burst pipes, some carpeting, and most recently, some sort of motor for the heater. Where they came in, the chief told me they came in and it was like almost 55 degrees in the building because the heater had gone out. So there are ongoing maintenance costs. The city assessor tells us that the retail commercial space of that nature would go for $6 to $10 a square foot. And the information that you have before you is the lease that was approved at the Finance Committee for, as I said, about $6 a square foot, about $2,500 a month. Is that about what it was, Kevin? $2,600 a month, again, designed to cover the cost of utilities and maintenance. It would also be neglectful if we didn't point out the fact that this would come out of the operational budget, and we asked all of our departments to make cuts this year of about $25,000 to put towards our salaries. So that is, hang on, I'll read this. The Portage County is just canceling their phones, the phone emergency. Their phones are back operational now.
That's good.
So again. What are your wishes?
See, somebody's using.
President Johnson.
Somebody's phone is talking to us. I'm certainly glad that the sheriff's department is back up and operational. It gives us all a sense of security. I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve this lease agreement with this change for item 4.1.
Again, page 53.
Yeah, sorry, thank you for making that clarification. For item 4.1, the tenant shall pay a monthly lease payment to landlord of $1 and reasonable...
It's not 53, 76, I'm sorry.
Do we have the right page?
76 now.
78, okay. I'll start over.
Please.
The tenant shall pay a monthly lease payment to landlord of $1 plus reasonable and customary utility costs, starting, well, this would be probably May 1st, 2023, and then the rest of, we delete that last section for the rate of $6 per square foot and dividing by 12. So that last section is gone.
Did you get that last piece? Can you repeat that one more time?
Sure. The tenant shall pay a monthly lease payment to landlord of $1 per month plus usual and customary utilities, starting May 1st, since I'm assuming that this would begin on May 1st. The monthly lease payments are calculated by, that last sentence could just be gone away.
Okay, so we're striking the last sentence.
Yeah.
And usual and customary, do you have a definition of that?
I would let staff work with the Boys and Girls Club because I bet they're used to doing that, so.
(inaudible) per square foot of the whole building.
Okay.
Let somebody else do that.
Okay. Is Logan around? Logan, you can, you have the ability to put that in clear terms in the contract?
Sorry, I was talking to the DA.
Oh, so the motion right now is to amend the contract for a $1 monthly lease payment plus usual and customary utility costs.
And if you want, that works.
I think usually if we could amend it to divided by per square foot for utilities, otherwise.
A per-rated share.
Very subjective.
Right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think usual and customary phrase is probably too vague for that type of purpose. Proportional on a per-square-foot basis or something like that would probably be more precise and predictable.
I love working with smart people. Thank you.
And Logan.
And Logan, yeah.
And Logan.
Wow.
Not bad, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Is it $1 a month?
Thank you for...
$1 a year?
Oh, did I, I said a month. Are you, per month?
Yeah.
You're okay with the extra $11?
That's a 1,200 percent increase.
I can write you a check for 12.
Any stipulations in there regarding maintenance of that square? Okay, so the Boys and Girls Club would then be responsible for it?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Second to my shore. Discussion only on the amendment. Alder Christensen.
I guess this is a good example of your reward for good work being more work. There's a reason why you're being asked to take on all those programs. I had a chance to work with them when we needed a after-school daycare when I was a superintendent out in Rochelle, and they came in and did an absolutely incredible job and very, very successful program. So I have to say that I'm not totally unbiased. I've seen what they can do, I've been in their center and watched the kids coming in and see the impact they have. I guess the way I look at this, this isn't an expense for the city, this is an investment. And I know that because of the services they're going to be providing to some of our most vulnerable children, that there's going to be less expenses coming down the road. So I think it's money very, very well-spent for the community and for those individuals. So it's, I'm very much in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Okay, Alder, short.
Go down the line if you want.
Thanks. For the same reasons that the mayor mentioned, this wasn't a no-brainer decision. Budgeting is extremely tight, and we do count on the department heads for very difficult work, living within very limited means. There's no question that the mission and work of the Boys, Boys and Girls Club is among the most compelling and important work being done in the community. That in itself didn't get me here. Because of work that I do, I very much clue into difference between, you know, public sector, private sector, social sector, and we had a whole discussion before, some, you know, some time ago about grants the city makes. So what really took me over into supporting this was what you've been talking about in terms of you are carrying out work that frankly, you know, local government and agencies could should be doing themselves. And so that was really the thing that pushed me over towards supporting was the fact that you're picking up where especially, you know, the county or the school district might otherwise be providing these services. Of course, they are the school district and the county, and we are the city, so I'm going to assume that they are grateful to us for chipping in this way. Thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. A while ago, and it's been a long time since I've heard this statistic, if a person going through their K-12, a standard K-12 education, and exited, exits that K-12 education making minimum wage, they will never pay back in taxes in their lifetime what it cost to put them through that K-12 education. And actually, it was my boss who told me that, and he's worked on this a lot. What I see this is, as Alder Christensen said, is an investment to launch people beyond that K-12 minimum wage opportunity into other things, whether it's workforce development, early intervention for homelessness, which causes trauma, and unfortunately tends to repeat itself generation after generation. To break that trauma and that early childhood trauma of getting in trouble with the law and intervening to show a different path is one of the most important things, I think, we can do as a community. This is an investment in, well, the next generation, the most important generation. Every next generation is the most important generation. I always say unless you want to go to the skilled nursing facility and lay there and hope and pray someone comes to take care of you with the right kind of skills, you better start investing in that next generation. Because we all will grow old and we all will need that next generation to be skilled, talented, prepared to take on the workforce, and contribute back to the community. So this is an absolute investment into the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Clarification on the motion because Section 6.2 talks about maintenance and operation. It says landlords should be responsible for the operating costs as described in 1.6. 1.6 talks about electrical charges, water, sewer, heating, and cooling. Are you striking then 6.2 as well as 1.6?
Yes.
So the motion includes striking 6.2 and 1.6. Further discussion, Mr. Marle.
No one would, I mean, no one here will say that the Boys and Girls Club is not an asset to our community at all. No one is here saying they don't want the Boys and Girls Club here at all. From my understanding from going through this, I mean, what they're asking for is just basically to, just to cover the city costs. I mean, the city's not making a profit on this at all. The city isn't trying to make a profit. Something the mayor didn't bring up was, we just did, I mean, the city just paid for a new, to like repave the lot in the back. I mean, that wasn't free. I mean, and it was full with potholes and so on. And what I think that the city's just trying to ask for is just to cover the basic costs, like free parking's not really free. It still costs to do a lot of these, it still costs to do a lot of these things. And I know that, I mean, no one, I mean, the Boys and Girls Club is not asking for a free ride, they're saying they're willing to pay, I mean, they will pay what they need to pay for the upkeep and so on. And from going through the lease, this is basically what it is. It's not the city trying, trying to make a profit or trying, or trying to like get anything out of this, really. And I'm, what I'm worried about is, I mean, what are the backend costs of that going to end up being for us and for them as well? Because for this lease, or they're, I mean, for that lease, the city's paying for a lot of things here, and then if things do go bad, Boys and Girls Club are going to have to end up paying for that, and the city's not going to be, is not going to be able to do that. Or they're going to have to pay for outside contractors to do it, and that's going to cost even more, even more money. I mean, and that's one of, that's one of the concerns, I think, that the council needs to really think about that. I mean, I think from, from going back through this lease and to, and to like talking with other folks within, within the city, they're just looking at just covering the basic costs, and that's it.
Thank you. Alder Dalton?
Chief or Director, I'm wondering if you could come up and refresh my memory on the total square footage of this building.
It's in the contract, about 5,500 square feet.
No, not the lease.
Oh, the building.
The entire building.
Ah-huh.
Thank you, I was talking to the chief.
The entire building is about 34,000 square feet.
34,000, okay. I'm just trying to look at the proportional costs that we're talking about here. And my recollection is you stated the annual cost for this entire building utility-wise is $70,000?
Correct. That's including snowplow removal, salt, and general maintenance.
Okay. So the, the utility rate that we're discussing is about half of what the proposed rate in the lease is from my calculations of the 70K, times about a fifth of the building?
Since I am up here, can I speak?
Alder Dalton is done? Yes, I was going to call on you after that.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, the programs that they offer are phenomenal. The youth enrichment services, obviously law enforcement uses, the gateway, we use the truancy abatement. The best thing about this is we got to meet with all of you, kind of show you what our long-term plan is. We got to meet with Kevin, and I think we all are on the same page. Eventually, what we'd like to see is this be a city campus, and then that be a Boys and Girls campus over there. For three years, the law enforcement agency here will deal with the kids walking across the parking lot, probably parents leaving this way, and all that other stuff that's really kind of inconvenient, especially if we're on a critical call. The only thing I'm asking is, it's up to you all what you want to charge them for the lease. Instead of doing like square footage, can you just give me one set fee? Because it's going to, I'm going to have to do more work every single month because it's not, I don't have people to do this. I have to take the square footage, wait for the public utilities bill, I've got to wait for the electric bill, I've got to wait for the sewer bill, and then I've got to separate that by square footage. If we just do one set fee, I don't care what it is, I don't care if it's $500, $1,000, just one set fee to cover the utilities would make it much easier on me. And again, I haven't slept since Good Friday with all the stuff that's been happening in the town here with the officer-involved shooting. But just, it'd be a lot easier on me if it's just one set fee for utilities. Figure them out if you want to, but again, it's 34,000 square feet, we're offering them 5,500 square feet. And I think it's an incredible program. I'd love to have them here for three years. With our plan, obviously, to move them over to the Parks Department eventually, as long as the city approves it, moving parks here. Forestry needs a garage, we need a garage, and that could, this could be the start of actually getting something planned and done.
Thank you, Chief. Again, we're still only talking about the amendment. Any other comments on the amendment? Alder Christensen, again.
Is it, is it possible that even under the terms of this, could we reach out to WPS and to Water and Sewer and ask them for a monthly average? And then, so then you could get a consistent...
We have actual numbers.
Yeah.
We do have actual numbers for the building, however, that part of the building now is unoccupied.
Right.
By occupying it, the heat will go up, there'll be more water usage and so on.
Right, and I've thought about that as well. I think what would be more accurate would be to go back when it was occupied and then just adjust it for what the increase in rates are. Because I think the usage back when it was occupied would probably be a much more accurate reflection of what we'll be experiencing once they take...
You're right, yeah, but the rates would be different. I'm not sure that we can, I think we can, because the data's out there, someone's got to have it.
Yeah.
Public service should be able to supply the, you know, the rate per therm and that sort of thing, and then we calculate it up.
And just from when it was, that's what I'm thinking might be the most, and I think that would be easier for them to budget. It would also be a lot easier on the chief if we could come to a kind of a mutually agreeable, whether it be 600 or whatever it ends up being.
All right, Director Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for giving me a minute. I just want to add, we got a tremendous opportunity here. So the Boys and Girls Club has been a great partner for us ever since they moved into the park. Unique thing from my perspective is Gerke Park is bursting at the seams. That's great, right? We love coming to see everybody here, but we do need to plan to make sure it works for everyone. So I think in all the conversations we've had so far, everybody is really in lockstep on this. What I would ask, I think, is if we could have one more conversation to look at actuals and just maybe come to the number. I think everybody understands the 36 months, I think everybody understands the long-term plan for where we're headed, and I think everybody really sees it as an opportunity. But again, if we don't strategically plan for what happens after 36 months, maybe situate this number in one more conversation, I think this just alleviates that quite a bit more. Potentially, I don't want to delay the action, I think everybody knows that, but I think the number could be something we could really hash out with actuals and probably a reasonable estimation towards what usage could become versus trying to sort that out now. So, but again, I think, again, to speak to what the chief said, as well as the conversations we've had so far, we want them as our neighbors, we want them here. The best thing we can have is kids in the park, our future leaders of the city, but we also have to be cognizant that we don't want four buildings with everybody in each one of them. It's great to have a couple campuses where we're going in the future for long-term growth for them, for us, and for our employees, as well as everybody that's going to be utilizing their program. So great opportunity, I think we're supportive of where we're headed, but I think we could have one more conversation between now and the actual action on the final agreement, or if we have the latitude to zero that in, we would appreciate it.
A mutually agreed, you know, authorized staff to come to a mutually agreed-upon price to offset utilities on a monthly basis and...
Let's go here. Kevin, and I'm going to ask you to go up to the lectern. Is there going to be a problem if we delay this another month?
I prefer that we get it hashed out. Is it the end of the world if we want to delay it, if the council wants to delay it, I think we're fine.
I think we can authorize staff, we have confidence in staff to come to a mutually agreed upon.
We direct staff to use their expertise all the time.
Well, we have a motion on the floor right now, and so we have to act on that motion, and then if another motion wanted to be proposed, we could certainly entertain that. Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
On this motion, Alder Nebo.
Yes, I want to make sure I understand here. So we're saying, at this point, 1.6 says that the city pays their electric and their water and sewer and heating and cooling.
Mm-hmm.
And we're saying that's not the case, that they will pay that, and we will only charge a dollar a month for the rent. But they will pay their own utilities, including, because they define...
They won't pay their own utilities because there's not a separate meter.
Play a portion of.
That's what we're trying to figure out here is, how do we rate the utilities for the amount of square footage they're using?
Because it, so we're not saying that the monthly lease payment will be 25, 27, 50, it'll be a dollar, but utilities will be covered based on the amount of space. And by utilities, that includes electric, water, sewer, heating, and cooling, not just cable and internet.
Correct. The cable and internet are already in there.
Something else, but that's, that's defined by, they define utility by, for example, cable and internet, and then they put electric, water, sewer, and heating and cooling as separate. So I want to make sure we're not going to pay their, what I consider a utility cost, which is water, sewer, and electric, and internet access and that kind of stuff.
Yes. Based on the current amendment, that is, that is how it would happen. Right? The current amendment is a proportional, $1 a month plus a proportional amount of the utilities based on square footage, and striking 6.2, which references the responsibility in 1.6. 1.6 are the operational costs paid by the landlord, electric, water, heating, and cooling, et cetera. 1.7 already says that the tenant will be responsible for cable and internet, cleaning of the leased space, pest control, et cetera.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure... Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I had that right in my mind.
Okay.
Not at all denigrating what the Boys and Girls Club does, but I know that we have a critical need with the police department and the, and the park department, and I think what they've envisioned as the future is really the way that we wanna go. So if we can do this in, in the short term to accommodate the Boys and Girls Club and give police and parks the ability to plan ahead and get that set in stone, I think it's a win for everybody.
Thank you, Alder Fishler.
I was just curious if we could move items A, B, and C from 1.6 to item number 1.7? Would that help?
No, because we're only working on the amendment that we have on the floor.
Oh, sorry. Getting ahead of myself.
All right. On the amendment, Alder Dalton.
I have a suggestion. According to our rules, 2.08, under number two, under motions, after a motion is stated by the officer or red, it shall not be withdrawn except by the consent of the council or mayor. So I'm wondering if here we could have an opportunity by the consent of the council to withdraw this motion and make a new motion.
You could. It would be just as easy to vote on it.
Can we just vote on it?
Well, I guess.
I would be willing to withdraw my original motion so that we can return to clarify it.
Okay.
Second?
I would go along with that.
And then if the body agrees?
So, all those in favor of the withdrawal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just as easy to vote on it. All right, so now we are back to nothing.
I will make a new motion.
Okay.
My last meeting, I can do what I want.
Within the rules.
Yeah, within the rules. So, I will make a motion to approve this agreement with this change. Item 4.1, I will restate it, the tenant shall pay a monthly lease payment to landlord of one dollar a month. Honor before the first of each month, starting May 1st, 2023, continue to strike 6.2. Then, items 1 point, sorry, I'm scrolling back, be patient. 1.6, the lease should include the payment of items A, B, C, as determined and negotiated by staff from both Boys and Girls Club and the city.
One more, one more time.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, no, because you said, you said items A, B, and C, I assume you wanted those to go to 1.7.
Yeah, 1.7, let's put them there, thank you.
Okay, so you wanna put them in 1.7?
Yeah.
So you're adding 1.6, A, B, and C?
That is correct.
1.6, A, B, and C.
And letting all these fine people do what they do.
Okay, so just for clarification then, that would put 1.7 as operating cost by tenant to include electrical charges, water and sewage charges, heating and cooling charges, utility...
As determined and negotiated.
Can we get the city attorney in here again? See, this is why we typically negotiate these things and bring to you something that was verbally agreed upon.
Now everybody gets to see how messy it can be.
Instead of negotiating on, on the floor.
Make the sausage.
All right, I just wanna make sure you can put this into words.
There's messiness, there's sausage making, and then there's trying to use a open meeting to craft the fine language of a contract. The first two are objectionable but unavoidable, the third, I mean, come on, guys, this is starting to get a little weird. If there is, if there are general principles that you would like this contract to adopt with regards to the utilities, I, I think that that would make a lot of sense for, for a motion, but trying to wordsmith this stuff on the fly here, as you can, as you're all experiencing, is very difficult and awkward.
That's why I'm sending it back to staff.
Right, right.
So it is going back to staff.
But when we're talking about, strike this paragraph and modify this one in this way...
Negotiated by staff.
As taken...
Let, let me offer a suggestion that might clean all this up. You have thoughts and concerns, some of which have been already conveyed, why don't we just have those thoughts and concerns conveyed to the city attorney, have him redraft this, and bring it back for consideration?
Which I was just gonna ask, is there an urgent timetable for this?
The president, the president did not say there was an urgent timetable, he says he would prefer if we could do it sooner rather than later, but we could also have a special meeting later this month if we absolutely had to.
But we're gonna have reorg pretty soon.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
You gonna have anybody tomorrow? Think so?
Why not?
Okay, generally, we don't have anything extra, but I'm okay with that, I guess.
Yeah.
Can the agenda be changed?
Brilliant.
Oh, no, we can't.
Oh, we already have the agenda out.
Notice.
That's right.
It's that posted.
Hmm.
You fine waiting? All right, we'll just bring it back next month. Anybody who has thoughts now, get them to the city attorney, and we will redraft this again.
Will that include the specific number then that we were trying to pin down?
We should be able to have that by then, yes.
Yep.
Okay, so are you withdrawing your motion?
I am.
Oh, actually, it was a second.
It wasn't a second.
Perfect.
I was trying to create a general framework to make sure that we are...
All right, we're just gonna move along then. We will have this next month, hopefully with less messiness. All right.
And what I can do is just get in touch with you directly to talk about some of the specifics in there, so.
Meg, we can't. If you need to say something, you can contact the city attorney's office, or you have to go to the lectern, because nobody can hear you from the floor.
I just wanna note, the general concept is we are requesting a dollar a month rent, and we are requesting proportionate share of utilities. We all recognize we live in Wisconsin.
Right.
We all recognize utilities shift and move. And so, the Boys and Girls Club, I guess, is saying they're gonna work with the city as a tenant.
That, that is exactly what we're doing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, back to the agenda. Item number seven is the amendment to Chapter 21.03, sub-21, lawn maintenance regarding permanent implementation of Nomo May. We've had this for several years now, general success. The ordinance before you will make it citywide through the month of May every year with the stipulations that were provided.
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
One second. It's okay, go ahead.
I'm gonna give it tomorrow. He shouted it out above everybody else. All righty, discussion on Nomo May.
We already talked about it.
We did, several times. Any comments from the audience?
What audience?
Trevor Rourke.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Reza. Trevor Rourke, 601 Washington. I just wanna say I support this pretty cool program. I was really excited when Alder Zerazua brought this forward years ago, and I've been participating since, and I think it's probably gonna have to expand at some point to Nomo April. All it does, that doesn't sound as good.
How about No Snow April? Gonna start there.
That's a good idea. So, yeah, this is great, thank you.
All righty, any further comments? Seeing and hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morel.
Yep.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebohn.
Aye.
Placence.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keemer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number eight is an ordinance amendment for term limits for the mayor and alderpersons. Alder Shuda?
I'll make a motion that, what would be the word? Deny?
If that is your wish.
Deny the ordinance.
Sir's second?
Sure.
Seconded by Shore. Discussion.
Well, if anyone...
Go, you go.
Chaos, chaos. Alder Dalton?
If anyone wanted to amend the term numbers within there for contemplation, that would be a part of it, but as I stated in earlier meetings, I think that this helps give some framework, and while some can argue that there are not enough people running for the elections, I think that our very involvement and different causes can stimulate more candidacy. And in a number of the appointed cases, we've had a number of candidates show up, and some of them, most of them have said they would intend to run again in the future. So I think sometimes we miss the fact that even just a person vacating their seat, or knowing that that seat will be vacated, helps people to recognize and contemplate that they might actually run for the seat itself. So I will be supporting the denial of this, the motion that is on the floor. Oh, I will not be supporting.
That'd be, that'd be news.
Does everybody plan, is it a trivia weekend for everybody?
Yeah.
Alder Shore?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, I certainly understand the intent here. I mean, not to get too dark, but the idea is sort of like, death is a feature, not a bug, in the system that, you know, renews itself over time, right? I get that, we've, also, we've heard some, some really good ideals about leadership, about participation, all good, about, about transition, about handing off to the next generation, about, you know, coming to an end of time in service. But, for me, this is, this is kind of squarely in the democratic principles category. The reason I can't support it is, who takes office is purely between the voters and the candidates, full stop. Anybody who's meets the qualifications to run for office should be able to do so, and as I say, it's, it's just down to the, the views of the voters, choice of the voters.
Thank you. Any other comments? President Johnson?
First, I want to thank Alder Dalton for having the courage to bring this forward, because as you can see, there's a little bit of uncomfortable with this, and it takes courage in leadership to bring forward things that may be uncomfortable. So, you know, kudos to you and, and your bravery for that. As I said before, I, I truly believe that we should be term-limiting ourself to some degree, that we shouldn't hold on to our power so strongly that we think that we are the only people who can ever make a difference in the world, and we should be actually working to build capacity, opportunity in other people to find their voice so they can serve. But from the pure principles of democracy, the, the people are, are the ones who speak. So, I, I, but again, I so appreciate the work in this.
Thank you. Alder Christensen?
I've actually enjoyed the discussion on the topic, because it made me kind of rethink things and look at things, so I always think that's healthy. I do think that some differences, when you're looking at term limits in general, I think it's important to differentiate between the different levels. Like I mentioned during the committee meetings, one of the primary differences is, we live in Stevens Point, we spend our entire time serving, living here in Stevens Point. When you get elected at the state level, you spend a good portion of your time down in Madison, and there is a potential of becoming separated from your electorate. When you're in Washington DC, you spend most of your time in Washington DC, and it's easy to get disconnected. Here in Stevens Point, as an alderperson, I, there's no way I could get more than a mile and a half away from any of my constituents, I'm there all the time.
Well, unless you have to go to the new justice center.
Yeah, that could be a lot easier. So, I, I think that's a fundamental difference. The other thing is, we did have someone say that, you know, people make, they become career politicians, I'm thinking, if I have a five thousand dollar a year career, I'm not gonna last very long. And so, it's, you know, ours is, I mean, it's more like missionary work. There may be a difference, and, to be honest, to be fair, a mayor's salary is enough to be a career. An alderperson's salary is about enough to go out for supper every once in a while, and that's about it. And that's fine, I mean, we don't do this for the money. I, I think that's another fundamental difference as well. But that being said, I, I appreciate having, having, have a chance to have a, a good discussion, be able to look at all the different factors, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Alder Niebohn?
I can honestly say, when I first ran for alderperson, I didn't know we got paid. So, I, I assumed you did it out of the goodness of your heart and the desire to serve the public.
You can always return it. You can pay for the Boys and Girls Club lease.
But being on social security now, I do appreciate that, that small stifle, but as Alder Christensen said, it's not enough to live on.
Definitely not.
I think a couple weeks ago, District Seven had an opportunity to term-limit me and decided overwhelmingly to return me to this position, and I really appreciate, and I'm humbled by, by that support. I think elections are term, are term limits, and I would encourage, I have not, at this point, have any plan to run again, so after five terms, I think I've had enough. I think probably, I wouldn't mind serving on a commission or two, but I'd like to see someone else step up. And on the other hand, if, if your district really appreciates the job you're doing, they should have an opportunity to continue to return you to office as long as they appreciate the job that you do for them. So, I, and again, it's not an easy discussion to have. I tend to agree on the national level that maybe term limits would be a good idea, but on the local level, people know us, we know our neighbors, we know the people in our districts, and I don't think we, we need term limits at this level, so, thanks.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Tonight's my last night as being the new guy. And being the new guy, I really relied on the fact of the experience that is represented by all the alderpersons that are here right now. And it's gonna be sad to see some of them go as far as that goes, but I think it would have been a lot tougher to get in here if all of a sudden everybody was on their first or second terms. Having the history that some of these people have here has really helped me get started in my position. That's all that matters.
Anything else? Yes, sir?
I know when Mary and I first were, our first reelection, three-fourths of the council was new. And we had a heck of a time, because we didn't know what the hell we were really doing. And I'm serious, I mean, you think you, you come in here and you think you know, you think you know this, you think you know that, and there was a lot of times during meetings, there'd be dark silence, because like, okay, what are we gonna do? I mean, so, we didn't have really that many people, we had like two, we had Jeremy and Mike, who were like the only two, everyone else was new. And it was, it was really hard. I mean, we went through a lot of things that we shouldn't have had to, because no one really knew any better, really. So, I mean, I think it was, it's nice to have the alder, the elders, the elders here to help with...
The elder elders?
The elders, the elder statesmen.
Elder elders.
To, to help, because, I mean, that first term was really hard, and there was a steep, there was a steep, steep learning curve that Mary and I had to really learn.
Well, that makes both of you the, the most tenured people on council.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Alder Fishler?
I just wanted to thank Alder Dalton for bringing this forward, because, yeah, having uncomfortable conversations is not easy, and, but it's necessary to just not even, to hone in your skills on having uncomfortable conversations, and then also just getting input from the public. It was good to hear from other people for once, you know, where they stood on the issue, and, you know, some thoughts were very, you know, very enlightening, and people had, you know, on both ends of the spectrum, really good things to say and, and good comments. So, I felt that was really important from just the standpoint of having the public involved, and even if it's not always successful bringing hard things forward, it's very much appreciated by myself that you did so. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Comments from the audience?
My name is Craig Tesh.
My name is Craig Tesh. I live at 1100 Framack in Stevens Point. I was at the Policy Committee meeting last Monday, and there were some things that I heard alders say. Of course, a few more things today, but the main ones that I found was that, first of all, that they felt like when you're an alderperson, it takes a long time for a person to learn the particular position, or that they're still learning. Some were said by people that were only here for a year or so. To me, this sounds like if you think you shouldn't be subject to term limits, you know, that you shouldn't be subject to term limits until you reach a certain level of expertise. As far as my concern, you should be, you know, that doesn't have anything to do, I don't see, with term limits. Things are going to be coming up all the time that are going to be completely new and, you know, indifferent. So when would that ever be? When would it ever be that there'd be a time that you wouldn't be learning? It just didn't, that logic just made me want term limits more. Second of all, it was also said there's very little interest in running. But first thing I noticed is that whenever there's an alder that decides not to run, like Ms. Dalton this year, or Ms. Jennings last year, there's always other people that step up. It isn't like, you know, nobody else wants to run. Political parties, to be honest with you, political parties, particularly the Democratic Party, usually make sure of that. Then, yes, there was only three districts last time out of six that were contested this year. Last year was five out of six. Now, you've got, you've got, you know, the problem is that of the eight contests, only seven of them, I mean, seven of them were won by the incumbents, only one was not. Nationally, the average odds was right around 90%. So maybe think that, thinking that maybe some people that want to run for office, maybe they feel like there's less chance of them winning if they're going against an established incumbent, that they have, they already have the experience, and that if they had to go debate against them or something like that, that they wouldn't stand much of a chance. People were talking about also about Madison and Green Bay. I hear, but if I could just give a few more minutes, just a couple.
If you could wrap it up, Craig, please.
Maybe three, maybe, I'll finish that last one then. Maybe three terms for mayor and six for terms for alder. 12 years, maybe that's a compromise. Because I feel like if you haven't learned the job by then, then maybe it's time to give somebody else a shot. I think you should have some type of term limit there. I don't think anybody's going to be hurt by the 12 years. Then again, you know, I liked the third district alder. I thought she had the right idea of getting feedback from multiple people. She mentioned referendum. Well, who knows? I mean, this isn't something like no more may, but if the majority, but my own particular purposes feeling is that if the majority of people don't want term limits, then I would say that we wouldn't have them.
Thank you, Craig.
But that's not what I heard.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I think we've exhausted the speaker list, so the motion is to deny. If you are in favor of denial, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And we have 10-1. The motion to deny is approved. Item number nine on our agenda is a resolution, a request from Jim Buckholz, representing the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Board of Regents, sorry, Wisconsin, University of Wisconsin Board of Regents, to rezone three unaddressed parcels off of Vine Street from R2 Single Family to C Conservancy. President Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Seconded by Dalton. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll, clerk.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 10 is an assignment of the amended and restated development agreement for the North Side Yard Project.
It is saluted.
Morrow moves.
I'll second.
Seconded by Niebone. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. On page 68, you will see the award, the second phase of the Emerson Park Redevelopment Project 23-10 to Earth Inc. for an amount not to exceed $207,750. President Johnson moves. Dalton seconds. Discussion.
I have something.
Yes, sir.
I think it's great that Alder Johnson was able to move this through, and I know she put in a lot of hard work, put in a lot of time, talked to a lot of folks, helped raise money for this. I just want to tip my hat to her for everything she was able to do.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And may I acknowledge.
Absolutely.
I would like to, I don't work alone, maybe drink alone, but not work alone.
George Thurman.
George Thurman. The Friends of Emerson Park, including our co-chairs, Ginger Keimer and Danielle Weaver, our board, the assistance of the director. This has been an amazing project. We have a steering committee that is a workhorse like you've never seen before, out getting the money necessary to make this a jewel in the middle of our city. And it just, every time I drive past and I see kids out there, it's like my heart is happy. I did my job, and I feel very happy.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 13 is to award the KB Willett Ice Arena Building addition and the Gerke Park Improvement Project 22-18 to Altman Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $2,866,500. Moved by Fischler, seconded by Dalton. Did I see your hand? Nope, I didn't. Okay, moved by Shore.
[inaudible].
I thought I saw a Weaver. All right. Discussion. Another great community project. All right. If you're in favor, yes. If you're opposed, no, and the clerk will call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
That's approved. Item number 14 is to award the 2023 Road Resurfacing Project 23-02 to A1 Excavating LLC for an amount not to exceed $2,867,083.87.
I'll move.
Moved by Fischler.
I'll second.
We'll give the second to Dalton. Because that time I did see your hand. Not just a flicker out by a peripheral. Discussion. Hearing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
And that's approved. Item number 16 is an ordinance amendment to approve the amendment to Chapter 24, specifically Section 24.27 as it relates to parking violations.
So moved.
Moved by Morrow, seconded by Niebone. We get whiplash. Discussion.
I would just say, I've already gotten in trouble for the price. I heard from a constituent about the price of tickets, so I'll probably get another phone call, but.
Okay.
Got to do what you got to do.
There is a way to avoid parking tickets, I forget what it is. Legally, that's what it was. Any other discussion? All right, clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. Item number 17 was handled previously on our agenda, so we'll move to item 18, which is the disallowance of a claim, Mike Splinter, for damages to a vehicle due to pothole.
I'll take it.
President Johnson.
Motion to approve the disallowance of claim.
Okay. Seconded by Dalton. Everybody understands that, right? We're approving the disallowance of the claim.
Is the complaint here?
They are not.
They are not.
We do have our comptroller treasurer who can speak in regards to the insurance company, but generally speaking, unless there's some form of negligence on the part of the city, we deny those claims.
Right. I just have enough to contain what's here to say.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so if you are in favor of the denial, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the denial, you will vote no. Everybody clear on that? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Christensen.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Keimer.
Aye.
Zerazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Plissants.
Aye.
Niebone.
Aye.
Shuda.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fischler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
And that is approved. I'm going to move over to the lectern for our last item. You know, it's been mentioned here many times that it takes a special sort of person to throw themselves into the lion's den and step up and do the job. And we have two of our alderpersons, who tonight is their last meeting, and they exemplify community service. They work tirelessly to do the job that few give credit for, and it takes up an awful lot of their time. They do it because they care about the community, they care about their neighborhood, and they want us to be better. We don't always disagree on how we get to that point, but we all have the same goal in mind. And tonight, I would like to take some time to recognize those people. First up, we have Melissa Johnson. Melissa?
Thank you very much for your service. And the plaque here says, "In recognition of your dedicated public services, alderperson, on the City of Stevens Point Common Council, the people of the City of Stevens Point extend their profound appreciation and sincere gratitude to Melissa Johnson, serving February 8, 2016 to April 17, 2023."
That's a long time. I remember that meeting. It was over at Lincoln Center when we used to meet over there. I am going to say a few words. Surprise, surprise, huh? I'm going to, I'll do this correctly, I'll hand this to the clerk, so you can pass them back out to, I'm just careful, it's going to be like Brock, I need one for myself. I love public policy. I'm a policy wonk through and through. This is what I love to do. When we sit around the kitchen table, this is what my family talks about when people stop over. This is what we talk about, yes, I have a boring life. However, I believe desperately in democracy. And I believe desperately in the institution of this common council. Back in 2016, when I first started, there were some questions about the power and authority of council. And with the help of Kathy Dugan, some of you know her, I put together this, which was approved by the common council, and as you can see, has not been updated since. I am now saying to you, please update it and make it prettier, maybe use something like Canva instead of PowerPoint, or not PowerPoint, that I use Publisher. But I'm going to read something because this is the important part. Powers of the common council, from Wisconsin Statute 62.11, per N5. Except as elsewhere in the statute specifically provided, the council shall have the management and control of city property, finances, highways, navigable waters, and the public service, and shall have the power to act for the government and good order of the city, for its commercial benefit and for the health, safety, and welfare of the public, and may carry out its powers by license, regulation, suppression, borrowing of money, tax levy appropriations, fine, imprisonment, confiscation, and other necessary or convenient means. The powers hereby conferred shall be in addition to all other grants and shall be limited only by express language. That is not only your authority, it is your obligation as a body. I can think of nothing more important than this. The State of Wisconsin by law has conferred upon you this obligation. It has been a distinct pleasure being a part of that. Again, it doesn't come individually, you pretty much don't have any power. Collectively, you are a force to be reckoned with. I found this today, and I'm going to read this again, because I believe desperately in democracy. We are a representative democracy. You each represent a certain number of people. The tenants of a representative democracy are, number one, respect for human rights and fundamental freedoms, holding free and fair elections, a pluralistic system of political parties, meaning not only our parties, but we have public input, and we just saw it tonight with a great group of people, separation of powers, that balance of powers. The mayor's office is the executive branch, the council is the legislative body, and independence of those branches of government. Now, independence doesn't mean that you're separate or always battling, but it means that there is a separation. And you have to find a way to bring those together in good public policy. We have done amazing things. We have done amazing things. We still have a lot of work to go. The vision of my campaign was to make a better point. It's not a tagline, that's a movement. We can build this community and build it for the future, not for me, gray hair, getting old, but for those who come after us. So thank you for letting me be a part of this. Thank you to the voters of District 5. Thank you to all of you for the support year after year in electing me president. It has been a distinct honor, and I have had a blast even when it was awful. Thank you.
And now, Alderperson Dalton. In recognition of your sir dedicated public service, as alderperson on the Stevens Point